Okay, everybody. Good morning. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission Meeting. I want to welcome those that are joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, also those here in person. Welcome. When you walked in today, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to grab those and follow along with the items we're discussing today. If you're curious about any of the supporting documents that the commission has at their disposal as we study these items, you can always grab those at sedgwickcounty.gov as well. We encourage you to dig in and look at that supporting information. Looking through today, we have a great proclamation and then some business of the county, so why don't we get to work? I'll call to order the meeting to order for February 5th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence to honor those who were lost as well as the families impacted in the tragic events surrounding American Airlines Flight 5342. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for calling the moment of silence for those that lost their lives, the 67 individuals that lost their lives in this tragic event. It's been a difficult week for this community. Grateful for the leadership, City of Wichita, our state delegation, federal delegation, those that have really tried to get out in front and to offer guidance to this community in a very, very tragic time. So I appreciate being able to honor those that perished, also the families that are impacted, a lot of families impacted by this. So it was very rightful that we paused to honor that. So thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Advanced ballots start mailing out today for the Wichita USD 259 bond election on February 25th. Only registered voters who live in the Wichita Public School District boundaries are eligible to cast a ballot in this special election. That's more than 200,000 voters, or 60% of Sedgwick County residents. Early voting starts February 18th. And new this year on Election Day, be aware that there are new hours at the polls. The polls will be open one hour later, which is 7:00 AM instead of 6:00 AM, and will stay open until 7:00 PM. Nominations are now open for the Excellence in Public Service Award. This recognizes employees from Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and Wichita Public Schools who exhibit the highest standard of service. Each of the three winners will receive $3,000 from the DeVor Foundation and will be honored at a reception. Nomination forms are available on the county's website, and the deadline to submit is February 21st. I also want to take a moment, as highlighted in today's invocation, it's been a week since the plane crash in Washington, DC that originated from Wichita. It's a difficult time for all as information becomes available. Mental health is a big part of a tragedy, and we encourage everyone to take a moment to check in with themselves. It's important to be present, ask for help or offer practical assistance to someone who is struggling, reach out to others for comfort and strength, and last but not least, there are resources available for additional help. The National Suicide Prevention Hotline of 988 is open 24/7 and available for anyone in need. Calm Care Community Crisis Center is available also 24/7 in person or by calling 660-7500. And there's also a disaster distress line by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration available at 800-985-5990. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, Nicole, appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Nicole? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't believe anybody has signed up for public agenda. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Optimist Day.
Okay, ask Commissioner how to read the proclamation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. The proclamation reads, "Whereas volunteers working with young people who are our joy of today and our hope for tomorrow are exuberant representatives of the potential to be researched, reached, and dreams that can come true, they are also unbounded in their enthusiasm to use their own talent, skills, and hard work to make a difference in others' lives. And whereas members of the Optimist International will celebrate Optimist Day throughout the world on the first Tuesday of every February in promoting their efforts in helping and recognizing the young people that make a difference in their communities and who will encourage a greater exchange of ideas between young people and adults. And whereas there are 2,400 Optimist Clubs with more than 70,000 members in Optimist International, and Optimist members throughout the world carry more than 6,500 service projects that serve 6 million youth and people per year. And whereas there are five clubs within Sedgwick County, Wichita Northeast, Wichita North, Wichita West, Mulvane, and Derby, serving 86,000 students in Sedgwick County. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim at February 6th, 2025 as Optimist Day, may this day instill pride in our county's Optimists for all their accomplishments and for the impact they have to truly make a difference in others' lives." Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to read the proclamation. I would make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to receive this, we have Judy Morris, the Optimist Governor of Kansas, if she's here. Please come forward. And you are encouraged to say a little something at the podium if you like.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition. Optimist Clubs, our five Optimist Clubs here in Sedgwick County have been serving the area since 1953. So it is, Optimists have been a presence for the benefit of youth and community for many years and continue to do so. And again, we do appreciate your time and offering. And these are representatives of several of our clubs. So we have Jim Morris and Steve Brown, Gay, Zoe Sisko, and Andre Sisko. And so, and I'm also a member of the Derby Club. So thank you again for your time, and we will continue to do our best to be of service to the community.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for what you do for this community. It's a great investment. And I just want to, I always like to ask, if someone wants to get involved or know more about this, where can they find more information, or how can they become a member or volunteer of the organization? How can they, how can they get connected up?
All right. Very good question. Each of our clubs have their own specific organization. I can leave you information on the Kansas District. So it's just basically, and then people can be placed or can be pointed towards clubs that are closest to them where they can offer the most help.
And is there a website they can check out?
There's just ksoptimist.org.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All of our groups.
Appreciate what you do. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. She also gave you guys the last newsletter because Wichita or Derby hosted the fourth quarter, and we hosted it at the hotel out on Rock Road. And I sent you guys the last newsletter from that event, so you have some information that you can also explore to see some of the different things that other clubs do besides ours.
That's great. Thank you. Well, one of the people standing up there, we know quite well, and we're pretty fond of her. Zoe, could you mind, how did you get involved in this, and what does it mean to you?
Well, I got involved the same way everyone in my family gets involved, this one. She texts you when and where she needs you, and that's where you go. I work with the Derby Optimist Club. I do a lot of the tech support, website, Facebook-type things, but it's a fun way to stay connected to her and stay connected to my community.
I think that's beautiful. Yeah. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Thank you. What a wonderful proclamation. We'd like to celebrate it with you and go out front and get a picture if that's okay, and a way we can celebrate this. And so why don't we do that? We'll take a five-minute break. We'll go out and celebrate the Optimist Day. Okay, thank you for being patient. What a wonderful proclamation. It's always good to be an optimist. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution reappointing Martha Linsner to the Sedgwick County Public Building Commission.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item would be a resolution reappointing Martha Linsner as Commissioner Wise's recommended appointment to the Sedgwick County Public Building Commission. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Wise.
Yes, thank you. I don't think that she was able to make it here today, but I'm happy to have her service, and she's been a really great involved citizen. So I move to approve this resolution.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
All right. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution reappointing Rich Hill to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in position number 13.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And if it's okay with you, Chairman, I would propose that we could take up Item C, D, E, and F altogether. They all involve the Solid Waste Management Committee. Starting with Item C, as Madam Clerk read, that item would be the reappointment of Rich Hill to a position on this committee as recommended by Commissioner Wise. Item D would be a resolution reappointing Tony Martinez to the Solid Waste Management Committee as recommended by Commissioner Bluebaugh. Item E would be a resolution appointing Ben Tucker as a private solid waste industry position on the same committee. And then Item F would be, includes multiple resolutions that would reappoint multiple folks to the Solid Waste Management Committee. The first would be, this committee actually designates someone as a chairman in this case. It would be reappointing Nikki Soice as the chairperson for this committee. The third-class city position, Mayor Terry Summers, reappointment. For an unincorporated resident position would be Clement Dickerson as a reappointment. There's a general public position, which would be a reappointment of Kate Drennan. And then lastly, there's a citizens' organization position, which would be a reappointment of Suzanne Baze. The recommended action is to adopt all these resolutions in Items C through F. Happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Since we're doing multiple items here, multiple appointments and reappointments, I'm happy to make a motion here at the end. But any commissioners have any comments on who's being appointed? Okay, that being said, I'll move to adopt the resolutions in appointments and reappointments in Item C, D, E, and F.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And again, thank you for all those that are willing to serve on these types of boards and in these roles. It's very, very important, very crucial to the commission and the county, so we appreciate your service. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item. Oh, we do. Okay. Oh, we do. Sorry about that. I thought, look, we're just moving along here. All right, you can stand right here. Good morning, Commissioner. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. If you'd like to say thank you.
Thank you, guys. It was a pleasure last year, last year and a half, and got to run around with Jim Howell one day. That was fun. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate you serving. Kelly, is there any more that are here today? Anybody else that is being appointed or reappointed today? Okay, yeah, certainly.
Hey, Jolene. Yes.
You'll just raise your right hand. I'll see this. Okay. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you can say anything you can.
I've served for a number of years on this committee, and I really appreciate the opportunity to continue to do so. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for being willing to serve. It's an important committee. A lot of work gets done there, so we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. And for those that were not here today but may be watching online, County Clerk's office will be reaching out to have you come through and sign all the proper, the appropriate paperwork, and then also take the oath. So Clerk's office will be in touch. Okay, all good, Kelly? Thanks, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item G, adoption of the proposed addition of Section 4.2.060 and the amendment of Section 4.2.180 of the Unified Building and Trades Code.
Okay. Good morning, Chris.
Hey, good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Chris Labor, MABCD for the record. And yes, so looking to add one small section, one paragraph by way of amendment, and then to revise one of our amendments within the UBTC, specifically within the Electrical Code and our Electrical Code adoption. So the NEC is Article 4 of our UBT C, does include the National Code and the local amendments. It is a National Fire Protection Association Code, specifically NFPA 70. Currently, we have adopted the 2023 addition, which is the latest addition of that code, and we have 20 local amendments. So that adoption was approved by both this commission and the Wichita City Council in May of '24. Since that time, two things have come up, and we're looking to propose the addition of one amendment, and then again, the revision of one existing amendment. So first is based on a pending addition to the NEC. So this has been released as an urgent, as an item for urgent attention by jurisdictions with the option to incorporate that into local codes. It has not yet been officially adopted into the NEC. That will happen in the next cycle. We do feel it is important for public and first responder safety, and this is specific to commercial electric vehicle charging banks. So we'll look at that in a little bit more detail in the next few slides. The second is proposing a revision to an amendment that we've had, a longstanding amendment in our code regarding multifamily dwellings and the way those can be wired, the amount of residential wiring versus commercial-type wiring that can be used in those. So this, we feel, is needed to better align with current industry practices and supply availability, as well as our community needs for housing, and it does not compromise public safety. So to begin with, excuse me, with charging stations, so similar to what you see at any refueling station with gasoline, diesel, et cetera, there's a big shut-off button that allows an emergency shut-off for those. When the code was originally established to cover installation of commercial EV charging stations, they elected not to include that since there have been some incidents throughout the nation. And as fire protection and fire agencies have further evaluated this, the need for those has become apparent. So just that, the current code lacks that means for emergency disconnect. We are seeking to add that. So this would require that each bank, not individual chargers, but that each bank, as they are put in place, has a power disconnect not closer than 20 feet to the bank of chargers, but not further than 100 feet away, that would allow that to be, the power to be shut off in the event of an emergency, again, similar to a fuel station. This would not apply to the existing charging banks that we have. We have about a dozen in our jurisdiction, give or take one or two. We have two large ones, one at Town East Mall and one at the airport. The others are relatively small banks with a few stations. But we do know that we have a few large, we have plans for a few installations that will be a fairly large number of banks. The second, we're talking here, multifamily commercial buildings. So our amendment that has been in place for about 30 years now, actually a little over 30 years now, has stated that anything over three stories will just be wired commercially throughout. So the NEC, baseline NEC, kind of has a chart that tells you what portions of, short of high-rise, but a multi-story, multifamily building can have residential, what we call the NM or the non-metallic sheath wiring. So this is your regular Romex wiring that you have in any other residential structure. It lets you wire the residential units with that wiring, whereas then the commons areas are still done in commercial wiring. So at the time of this amendment and up until very recently, the difference in cost was very nominal. And then you also had the complicator of three stories and below. It was very clear what you could do from three to six. It was a little more, a little more of a calculation. In order to just make it simple, we set above three stories, we would require commercial wiring throughout. And again, at the time, it was not of such great impact to the industry. Recently, we have realized, and especially we've had two projects, one that is in plan review, and we've had another project that's on the table that are going to be six stories of apartments. And we've realized that, one, getting the wiring is becoming complicated, and then also the cost has increased drastically from what it was in the past, or the difference in cost, I should say. So with that, we are proposing that we amend, that we adjust that amendment to allow, and we're really just now going back to allowing the baseline NEC guidance to be used in those multifamily structures up to the level of a high-rise. Once you get to the definition of high-rise, we still require commercial wiring. This will still, we still keep the amendment in place because we have some color coding with wires, some areas there that we want to protect. So that will remain. But the portion that requires commercial wiring above three stories but below 75 feet will be removed. They'll be able to now use Romex on the residential units with those. So hopefully that made some sense. And with that, I will gladly stand for questions. This is not a public hearing based on the level of amendment, but it has been pointed out that at the chairman's discretion, it may be appropriate to accept some public comment. And then we will, of course, recommend that BOCC approve and adopt the changes.
Well, Chris, thank you for that update. We've all been briefed on this and for all the work that your staff does in this, in this role. I think it is appropriate to open up for public comment, just see if there's any feedback from the public. Before we do that, there might be some questions for you from the commission. So Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask, you said there's a dozen or so existing applications out there. Are we going to go out and try to get them to comply?
No, sir. I mean, obviously, they have always had that option and still have that option, but there will be no requirement for anything retroactive.
Okay. Is that something that we'll put on fires radar maybe so that they know that if they show up at those locations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good questions. Other questions or comments for Chris? Okay, seeing none. Chris, hang tight for a second. I think it's appropriate that we open it up for public comment. We're talking about Item G and new business. This is an addition of a section and an amended, amendment of a section of the Unified Building and Trade Code. Would anybody here today like to provide public comment? Okay, ask again. We're open for public comment. If anybody would like to share. Okay, seeing none. We'll officially close public comment, bring discussion back to the bench. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Chris? Okay, seeing none. I will move to approve the resolution, which is the adoption of the proposed addition and the amended section of the Unified Building and Trade Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thanks again, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, request authorized $125,000 in matching funds for the State of Kansas Memorandum of Agreement.
Okay, Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoltz, County Manager. On January 22nd, the county commission meeting, the BOCC agreed to a memorandum of agreement with the State of Kansas to receive and direct 1.5 million of state funding dollars for the purpose of environmentally at-risk testing for people who may have suffered results pertaining to groundwater contamination in Sedgwick County with emphasis on the plume area surrounding 29th and Grove from a decades-old rail contamination spill. The state also included an additional $1 million in state money that could be assessed in a dollar-for-dollar local match, and that is what Item H is on your agenda today. The current status regarding the grant match toward this state money stands that there's been two donors. One is the Kansas Health Foundation, who has donated a half a million of that potential 1 million match. And the City of Wichita, at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, dedicated 125,000 toward that, that match. The proposal for today is for Sedgwick County to consider another 125,000 toward that state-funded match. toward that state-funded match, which would bring the total to $750,000 of local match, which leverages the counter-match from the state. It brings an additional 1.5 million total to the 1.5 million we've already accepted, for a total of $3 million for this project work. The expenditure of these funds would be contingent on the county entering into an agreement with a third party to act as the county's contractor in administering the environmental at-risk testing for the county. I believe that's going to be through Soul Source Kansas Health Foundation, and the money would come from BOCC contingency transferred to Public Safety Community Program in the general fund for expenditure. So, that's the request. Justin, did you have any other thing you wanted to add?
I did not, Tom.
Okay, very good. Commissioner, for your consideration, then.
Okay, Tom, thank you for that briefing. And again, if you recall, Commission, that we, on January 22nd, is when we signed the MOA with the state. I'd just make a couple comments, then open it up for discussion. This issue of water contamination is obviously top of mind for a lot of people. The issues of water are top of mind for a lot of people in our community, water supply, water innovation, strategies for our future, but the contamination issue is something that we talk about frequently here in Sedgwick County. Hasn't always been talked about. This is a recent revelation for many people in this community. As I've said a number of times, there's over 220 active contamination sites throughout Sedgwick County, and what we've seen through this process, 29th and Grove is what elevated the discussion in many ways for the community. It was elevated because for 40 years, the individuals that live in this plume area were unaware. They were simply unaware that there was poison under their feet, in the water and under their feet. Not only was the community not aware, many members of local government were also not aware. I know that there's those at the city of Wichita that represent that area, the current council member, Brandon Johnson, his predecessor, Levonta Williams, neither of them were aware of this. I know that I certainly wasn't aware of this when I decided to run for office. Neither was my predecessor. So, there's a significant challenge in regards to the issues of water contamination, not only in just the remediation of these things, but also in the communication of these things. And when you don't communicate to the public about an issue that is this significant, the result of that is fear, frustration, mistrust. So, a lot of the efforts in the remediation of the water, which are taking place through, through the state right now, that, those things are ongoing, those are happening, but the remediation of the human impact is what's under discussion today. I think I've been very public in saying that this MOA that we've been discussing is a result of a proviso, legislative proviso, that Sedgwick County was not at the table in that discussion. They did not inquire our input. They did not ask what we felt was going to be the appropriate measures in implementing this. This was something that we had basically received, and we tried to respond. And over the last six to seven months, what has taken place in collaboration with Kansas Health Foundation, city of Wichita, KU Med, is a very robust discussion about how do we best implement this process so that people can be best served? Since we weren't at the table to write the MO, or to write the proviso, how do we best deal with what we've been given? And it's been a hard process. It's been a difficult process because what we don't want to happen is just take the money and then spend it in a way that we don't think is going to be fruitful. And we have a proof of concept of what happens when you just throw money at testing. For over two years, Kansas Health Foundation put upwards of $400,000 into just doing testing for the people that are impacted in this plume, and yet only around $35,000 was accessed. Only $35,000 was used of 400,000. So, we learned a valuable lesson in that, that just throwing money at testing isn't the best approach, that we have to look at a systemic change, a change in how we actually implement toward not just one-time dollars, but for an entire generation and beyond. How do we equip these health clinics and those providers in the market that are doing the testing and doing the treatment and doing the service to these individuals? How do we make sure they are equipped to continue that when this money does run out? And I think what we've arrived at with a plan and what we're going to continue to work a plan with Kansas Health Foundation through an RFP process, I think we're going to arrive at something that's going to help us administer this to the best of our ability long-term. I think we've, we've adjusted this to a plan that is, that is doable. Is it a perfect plan? It's not. It's not a perfect plan, but the situation is complex, and we're doing the best we can with the resources that we've been given to shape what's happening at 29th and Grove. Before we open up for comment, I would just say, this cannot stop with 29th and Grove. Again, there's over 220 active contamination sites in Sedgwick County that, once we move this thing forward, the conversation needs to continue about how do we deal with these contamination sites and those that have been impacted, and those that have questions, and those that have fears. How do we deal with this long-term? Those conversations are continuing. They will continue. I know this commission plans to take a lead in those discussions, and I'm grateful for that, but this is, this, what we're doing today, and I'm asking the support of my colleagues for, is the, is a response to a specific proviso and a specific MOA for a specific incident, and as we build this, it can actually have longer, larger implications for other contamination sites. So, I appreciate, Tom, your work in this. I appreciate this opportunity to provide some matching friends from the county. I think it's an issue of justice. I think it's an issue of importance. I think it's a signal of where we're going in the community, that we're going to keep these issues top of mind. So, with that being said, anybody, questions or comments? Commissioner?
Did you intend to have public comment before, I mean, before or after we speak, or does it matter?
Why don't we go ahead and just speak and ask questions, and then if we want to open up for public comment, I'm happy.
I'll have a number of things I'd like to share, but I don't want to get into it deeply until we have public comment, if that's acceptable.
I'm okay with that. So, why don't we pause for a second? I think it is appropriate. Would anybody from the public like to share on this specific item, Item H? Again, we're on Item H. Would like to open up for public comment? Would anyone from the public like to share? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the bench. Commissioner?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak on this, and again, I love, I love trying to do research, but this is actually a very, very technical and complicated discussion, and so with that, I don't really have all my ducks in row exactly, trying to figure out exactly what I should or should not say this morning, but I, I was, let me start off by saying, I'll be supportive of the, of the item on the agenda to provide the $125,000. That's, I think, reasonable, but the reason I'll support that is a couple of reasons. Number one, I know there are people hurting, and they want to have some solution in place, and I think this is the best option on, on the table at the moment. I do think we need to find a better long-term solution, not just for this site, for really maybe a couple of hundred other sites around Sedgwick County. This is not the only community that has questions about their health that may be related to toxic exposure to groundwater and air potentially, that they're living in an area that may, maybe have some contamination in this soil. We don't know what the health effects would be. So, this is not the only location that has this concern. I do know the MOA does talk about, in opportunity for other areas, but there is a focus on 29th and Grove. But having said that, I, I think that the, the answer appears to be that we're moving towards right now, is we're, we're going to be working with the Kansas Health Foundation, and somehow there's going to be a community health center that's going to have some equipment purchased and some processes created that will provide some testing for an unknown number of people, and I don't know if this is for just a short time, or this is forever. I don't think it's clear exactly what their intent is. I know they're going to, you know, these community health centers don't have lots of, don't have lots of money either, and so to me, providing equipment might seem like a good solution, but I think long-term it's not going to provide the answer we need long-term. So, I think there are other ideas. I've spoken about that before. I think we should be looking for a longer-term solution for everyone in the county. So, to me, this is the best option that we have at the moment. I do, I don't think this is going to solve the problem long-term, and when, when this program collapses, and I think it will eventually, maybe not immediately, but at least for a few years, but at some point, there's not going to be available testing, and this equipment will need to be replaced, and I think we don't have an answer. Well, that's, you know, when that happens, we don't have an answer, what we're, what we're going to do at that point. So, I don't know that this is the, the best answer to the, to the problem or the challenge. So, now I pour myself into this issue of 29th and Grove, and again, it's not my district, and I, and I know there's a lot of emotion built in. There have been a lot of human suffering and even death, and so I want to be sensitive to that, and I'm sorry for anybody who has issues of, especially, especially when there's a belief that there may be an environmental impact on people's human suffering and death. That is another level of, of grief, if you will, that seems unnecessary, that there's something that should have been done. And so, I want to be sensitive to that, and I am truly sorry for those that have suffered personal loss in some way. Having said that, the data that we're using to make this decision today, and my best understanding is this data is not really very well-done, and I hate to say that, but I think KDHE, I've got several questions about their data. They did put out a report, apparently about two years ago, and it, you know, it's assembled by people who are much smarter than I am, but there's a couple of basic problems with this report. One of the general problems is, it's not really very clear about how they calculated their, their data, and the, the conclusion of their work has been alarming. So, if you read the report and you don't pour yourself into, how did they do this math? How, what numbers did they use? What was the population? What was the incidence of cancer? Where did they get the data? If you don't understand those details, but you just simply look at the conclusion, it can be very alarming, and to put this in perspective, I think it's in my book here. I want to say thank you to Celia Hack. She's in the audience with KUW. She's, she's spent a lot of time on this, and I, I also want to thank Dr. Oblaw. She is also very aware of, of the discussion, and then she's trying to weigh in to the best of her ability as well. Chairman and I, in fact, the manager, met with her a couple, about a week or two ago, spent considerable time talking about this entire discussion, and I, there are no, there are no way, there is no way right now at our fingertips to resolve what appear to be, appears to be an unnecessary conflict in this report. At the end of the day, Kansas has a rate of cancer, for this type of cancer that's most concerning, I'll probably, I'll probably not say this correctly, but it's liver cancer in biliary. Am I saying that right? I believe that's how it's pronounced, but maybe I'm a little bit off on my pronunciation. Kansas has incidence rate of 6.4, I think, per 100,000. Region 5 has an incidence of 7.5. Sedgwick County as a whole, 8.0, so ever so slightly higher than Region 5. And then in this area that has been the emphasis of this report, is this plume that is roughly, starts at 29th and Grove and goes roughly three miles to the south. It encompasses about 2,793 homes that live in this plume area. Of that, we don't know the population. That's one thing that I would just start off by saying, we don't know the population of that, plus, you know, people do move, and they may have lived in the area for a while, and they moved away. We don't know who they are. They are no longer living there. There are some folks that lived in this area for a very long time, and they have, I would assume that they have a much higher incidence or a much higher risk of whatever contamination impacting their personal health. But short-term exposure may, may be less problematic. So, first of all, we don't know the population of the, of the plume area. We do know that from, based on census data, and my numbers, again, may be off from someone else's, but there's roughly 30,000 residents that live in the ZIP codes of 67214 and 67219, and it appears that, because that region does include the plume area, that they may have used population data from the two ZIP codes rather than from the actual plume area, the 2,793 homes. And my comment is, that's, that is, that changes everything. And I'll just say that again, that, this entire report is based on population and incidences of cancer, and when you change the denominator from, we'll say presumably around 7,500 people, and I don't know if that's even close, but if there are 7,500 people living in the plume area, and you, and you have roughly 30,000 people living in the two ZIP codes, you can see the problem. So, a couple more things I would point out here is that one of the reasons this has come up, I believe, is because the, the federal government has changed the threshold for what they consider to be health risk for this type of contamination. It's called TCE or trichloroethylene, which is a solvent, and again, it looks like the, the site of the, the site of the contamination is 29th and Grove, but it went in, down into the groundwater, and the, the plume went to the south. And so, there are people that have water wells. I believe that the study, that they looked for water wells, they believe they found about 18 of those. The last time we talked about this, one of my questions was, is, are people, are there people in this plume area that are drinking contaminated water? And I was told at the time, yeah, we think there are. My suggestion was to find out if there's municipal water being provided to each of these residences, and it sounds like there is. So, the concern I had about, are, are people drinking the contaminated water today? It sounds like that's been resolved. I don't know how that happened or when that happened, but in terms of people being, you know, nothing left to drink but contaminated groundwater, it sounds like that problem has been largely put to bed. So, if you have a water well, and again, there's 18 that we know of in the, in the area, that there may be others, but as long as you are not drinking with it, cooking with it, consuming it in some way, bathing with it, then the, the risk of, of bodily contamination from that TCE is pretty minimal. There are, again, there should be some education, I believe, that's provided to the community, and I think that has happened. It needs to continue to happen, educating the people about the risks of drinking water that may, may not be from Wichita water, but it can't coming from other sources. If it's from the ground, you know, you need to be aware of the health risks from using that for things like swimming, for example, or gardening. So, there are other uses of well water that may potentially still impact people, but they need to be aware of that. Having said that, let me read one of the paragraphs that's in the news article that came out this morning, and again, I want to say thank you to KUW, but they put out an article this morning that, that is entitled, "Study Found High Cancer Rates Near Wichita Chemical Spill, But a New Information Muddies Results." One of the, one of the comments in here, and I think it's important, is that it says here, the trichloroethylene has, let me, let me back down. It's one of the last paragraphs that the, of the report. It says, "None of those tests, they did testing, from groundwater," let's see, let me go back up, "trichloroethylene also has the ability to evaporate from groundwater to the air. KDHE has said there is a potential risk of residents inhaling contaminated vapors. Union Pacific conducted air quality testing in some homes and buildings above the, the plume in 2004, '09, '12, and '13. None of those tests found concentrations of trichloroethylene above the state's indoor air quality standard for residential setting according to Sedgwick County." So, there's all kinds of reports here. One of the reports is 300 pages long, and on that, I'm going to read just a couple points. This report came out in 2004, if I understand correctly, but this 2004 report makes a number of comments, which I think are really important to understand. And again, this may not be, again, they did some testing after this, so, you know, we update, update the, update our information a little bit because things have changed a little bit, but on page 32 of this 300-page report, it says, "The risk for onsite worker associated with ingestion of COPCs in groundwater, with the exception of trichloroethylene, all other carcinogenic COPCs in onsite groundwater were within acceptable risk range. The risk for trichloroethylene is 5.11 times 10 to the minus third, which accounts for approximately 98% of the overall risk." So, there's a focus on trichloroethylene, first of all. There may be other things in the, in the area, but they're not the focus. This TCE is the focus. Going back to the report, page 35, I may have these out of order, but let's just go ahead and read them. Top of page 35, it says, again, "Offsite residents near 29th and Grove sites are supplied with potable water by the city of Wichita. Although groundwater is reportedly used for lawn and garden irrigation, no use of groundwater as a potable water supply has been reported. The city restricts the installation of potable water supply wells within the known groundwater impact. It has an authority to close existing wells if deemed necessary." That's interesting. Here's another, here are another couple of comments. "Because residential indoor air TCE concentrations are higher than crawl space air concentrations, it seems likely that groundwater is not an important source of TCE in, in, in the indoor air. The lack of impact of TCE groundwater from, on the indoor air of residences is also supported by the flux chamber studies conducted by the Forester Group. TCE was not detected in soil flux samples collected in the study area. They tested a number of homes, it says, houses 3, 4, 5, and 7 suggest that the TCE emissions from groundwater are not a significant source of TCE in the indoor air of these homes, and presumably the other, the other three, or, yeah, I think three or four homes potentially did have some threshold there, but let's go on. In the 29th and Grove studies, it is important to note that the highest TCE concentrations were detected, not in indoor air, air or crawl space, but in outdoor air, outdoor ambient air. Thus, a determination of subsurface vapor intrusion using the indoor VOC method is not possible for the 29th and Grove site. The only valid data available for evaluating subsurface vapor intrusion at 29th and Grove site is from flux chamber testing performed by the Forester Group. These data indicate that there is no measurable emission- performed by the Forester Group. These data indicate that there is no measurable emissions of TCE from the soil adjacent to the test houses at low detection limits. Together with the indoor air quality, indoor air studies, these data indicate that either, that either ambient levels of TCE in outdoor air or unaccounted for indoor sources of TCE are responsible for the, for the detected levels of TCE in indoor air. This is the most important sentence of this paragraph. It says, "All available data indicate that subsurface sources do not measurably contribute to the indoor air concentrations of VOCs such as TCE." There's so much more information here. I, I don't even know where to, where to begin. One of my, one of my questions is, if you're not touching the water, and it's 50 feet below your home, you're not drinking with it, bathing with it, or anything like that, you're not, you're not touching that contaminated water. And the air quality is, it sounds to me like these studies are saying that there's not a significant conclusion that the air is causing cancer. Now, that leaves us with the data about, what about the cancer rates? They are higher. And I talked to Dr. Abla, she made the point, and she is right, that we don't know in this larger area if the, if the, if the incidences of cancer are actually above that plume. And that may be true. The problem is KDHE doesn't have the data. So we don't know where the cancer concentrations are in the two zip codes. So I, you know, we have to, we have to be on, we have to, I guess, assume that for right now, even though KDHE report doesn't tell us this, that those rates of cancer happened inside the plume area. Also, there are people who, that, that live there for long periods of time, even though the risk at, at, in today, in the moment, right now, today, I don't think there is a, a reason for someone to move away because they're worried about their health right now, or to, someone says, "I'm not going to buy a home in that area because I'm worried about contamination from the ground that's going to kill me." I think we can, we can check those boxes and say, I don't think that the data proves that. In fact, the data seems to suggest us the opposite. But there may have been exposure from, from history, going back 30, 40, 50 years. And for those folks, they, they may suffer health consequences as a result of that exposure. So the testing still makes sense. What I'm upset about right now is the KDHE report is misleading. And I, and I believe that this report should be fixed, and I think that we need to call on KDHE to fix their report. Part of the problem is, they don't have the data. They, they are not clear in exactly how they calculated their numbers. But I think it's alarming when you read these numbers and you don't understand what's going on. It is, it is alarming. And I, I don't, I don't, I understand people feeling like their health is at risk based on this report. But the report itself, my, in my opinion, the conclusions are, are based on bad math and bad processes, how they calculated these numbers. So I'm still working on that. There is a whole nother issue related to low birth weight, which is another concern. And there's a concern whether or not this is something that is tied to this, this toxic groundwater or air, or air. There are three zip codes in Sedgwick County. Our Healthy Babies program actually includes a, a third zip code. But these are the same two zip codes plus one other. That Healthy Babies has a focus on providing, if you will, prenatal care and postpartum care for mothers and babies that are, that are needing some help. And it is a program that we provide money to, we support that through property tax dollars and I think some, some state grant money. But we do support Healthy Babies program. I've always been a fan of Healthy Babies program. The reality is, we don't know the cause and effect of why the low birth weight happens. And by the way, that's not just here in Wichita, not just in this site, it's all over, it's all over. There's, there's pockets of low birth weight around the, around our state and other cities of our state, and other counties of our state, and really nationwide. And it appears to be there's a socioeconomic connection potentially. So it could be poverty or early pregnancy that's driving some of this data. We don't know. But to presume that this toxic water is the, is, is results in low birth weight is a conclusion. I don't know that the data in this report actually supports that, other than the fact that there is a, a higher incidence of low birth weight in this area. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I guess my, my call right now is that KDHE would do a better job. This report, and I'm, and by the way, I think Dr. Minz tried to speak to this at one of the community events. His messaging was, there, and he's from, he's trying to approach this from a scientific viewpoint. But when you try to, to speak about the data and speak truth, and what do we actually know, what do we don't know, and let's, you know, let's try to be, you know, careful with what we, what we say here, he was not well received. I'll just say it that, that way. So, you know, there are folks that are, they, they want to find data support, to support what they believe. And the problem is, what they believe is based on data that I think was misunderstood and misled some folks. And Dr. Minz, I think, tried to speak to that. So here we are spending public tax dollars, and I think we, we need to do this. I don't like the program as it's currently been discussed. I think we can do much better. And I think all of our set residents of Sedgwick County deserve a much more comprehensive solution for long term. What I'm bothered by is the, this report has been misused, and even people know it's messed up, and there's an unwillingness to address it and fix it. I think our state should do better. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be supporting a motion, if there is one, to spend $125,000. But I think that we, we really are not being data-driven, because that's not what this is. This is about trying to provide some resources for people who want testing because they are living in fear today. And I think this report unfortunately has disserviced our people. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Appreciate many conversations we've had on the topic and, and your interest in trying to do what's right. Commissioner Blubow.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, my thoughts are, maybe we don't have the science down 100%, but we do know that there's groundwater contamination all throughout the county. And as long as we're investing in equipment and processes that we can serve the public in general, then I, I feel pretty safe going forward. But I feel like this isn't going to be cut and dry. This is going to just keep coming back to us.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think you're right. I think it's, it is going to keep coming up. And that's part of the discussion that has to happen. And I think we're doing what's right by elevating this discussion on a broader level so that this community is aware. And the result of this, and I understand that the study in many regards, there are people that lack confidence in the study and the data, credibility in the data. I, I fully agree with that. There's a reality of the study and the data, and then there's a reality of its impact on, that data's impact on people. And the impact on people, whether there's questions on the data or not, the impact on the people was profound. It was significant. And that impact, when they hear these rates of cancer, low birth weight, and they, and they, and it's tied to some sort of water contamination that they weren't aware of for 40 years, it obviously raises the angst and the frustration and the lack of trust. So I think this is step one in future steps of how do we regain community trust in regards to these discussions and bring the community to the table so that they understand the ramifications of water and water contamination, water issues and, and water needs. I would say part of this discussion and part of the frustration with me is, who's responsible for these things? I mean, that, that's the big part of the discussion. We got linked into this is because we have the, the Health Department. Well, this is not what the Health Department does. The Health Department does infectious disease, primarily. We don't do contamination. We don't do water contamination. This is not what the Health Department does. Environmental health was branched off and given to the city of Wichita for a period of time, but that's not even fully functioning as a department anymore. KDHE does remediation agreements and remediation wells, but who does this work? And, and most importantly, who's communicating to the public about what's happening here? So part of this discussion for me is reforming that entire supply chain of how does water contamination and water discussions happen to the community? We are not going to stop with this. This is going to be a consistent conversation so that people are aware of what's going on. They deserve that. That, that is justice, to deserve that if there's water under your feet that is poisoned and contamination, at the very least, you should know about it. At the very least, you should know about it. And at the very least, those that represent public interest should be moving in a way to help safeguard it. So that's just one of the many discussions we'll be having. I also think it's worthy of a discussion that people that contaminate our water, they should be held accountable in bigger ways. And that's just a personal opinion. That's not a legal opinion, as the lawyer gives me a glance. That's a personal opinion, that people that violate our water that we live and depend on and drink, that they should be held more accountable to that, to the, to the effect of that. So again, that's a personal opinion. So I appreciate the comments. Commissioner Howell?
You know, I just wanted to share, Chairman, I agree with your comments and Commissioner Blubow's comments entirely. I just wanted to point out, the county used to have environmental health department, and through a series of work, you know, a series of reasons why this, this was handed off to the city of Wichita, and at some point, it was dissolved. And so we do not have a local environmental health department, which I think is a discussion we, we ought to have. Second of all, I, I'd like to point out, you know, the county did not hide this. We did not actually cause this. We, I don't think the county was aware of this until fairly recently. And I think the county is stepping up to provide some help. And I think that that's very appropriate. I'm glad to see us getting engaged in helping people. That's what we do best. I do think this is a Band-Aid to the bigger problem. And with that, I think we should not slow down. Let's, we, again, I, I, just a matter of time till we have to, we're back at the table saying, now what are we going to do? So rather than, rather than waiting till this solution hits its endpoint, which is going to happen, we should start a conversation today. This is, what is our long-term comprehensive solution to this big problem that's county-wide? We need to find a real solution. I think we need to work with the state of Kansas to develop, if you will, a, a program that provides funding and solutions for everyone that needs this type of testing and this type of procedures that may help enhance their health or discover what is, is harming these folks. So a comprehensive solution needs to be created, and we need to work with our state partners and, and hopefully move something forward. This is not that. This is a Band-Aid to the problem. So we know we have a bigger problem, and we need to start working on what is the solution that's going to hit us in the next 20 or 30 years. This isn't it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions? Okay. I'm going to make a motion. I move that the board authorizes the expenditure of $125,000 in matching funds pursuant to the memorandum of agreement between Sedgwick County and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Expenditure of this funding is contingent upon the board approving an agreement with a third party to act as Sedgwick County's contractor and administering the environmental at-risk testing within Sedgwick County as described in the MOA. Second, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners, for your, for your work in this and for the work that will be done in this. I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Okay, now onto some good news. Brent Shelton.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty, members of the county commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. And for the next several moments, we're going to spend some time looking at the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter of 2024. This report is designed to show you the fiscal activities of the county for 2024, and some comparisons are made to fiscal activities at the same time period for 2023. Now, both this report and this presentation are the work of budget and accounting professionals in the Division of Finance. I owe them a debt of gratitude for preparing this information. They've done all the heavy lifting. I'm going to present the data that they have compiled. One reminder for you that is, this information is unaudited. It's subject to minor changes as a result of going through the annual audit. Y'all have received a copy of the report. We're going to make it available online in the conclusion of today's presentation. Let's begin with a high-level overview across four broad operating categories of Sedgwick County. Those are our county property tax-supported funds, the non-property tax-supported funds, the FIRE district, and then our enterprise and internal service funds. This chart shows you beginning and ending year fund balances, our revenues and expenditures across these categories, and the net change in fund balance across these different operations, operating categories. We're going to get into some more details on what drove some of the increases and decreases in these as we go through the report. But I think the key things that you're going to hear as we, as we go through the report is that the drivers for revenue were an increased tax base, some increases in our investment income, and ARPA revenues. And on the expenditure side, we're going to see higher wage and salaries due to the salary adjustments that you've made, increased ARPA expenditures, and then some transfers that are driving some of those expenditures. My comment about this is that these are planned, expected results on the, for the year. I don't see anything in there that's, that is alarming. So yes, good news, Chairman. Let's take a little deeper dive at the county's property tax-supported funds. There are five funds that have a dedicated property tax levy. That's our general fund, aging, WSU, highways, and our bond and interest fund. This first graph depicts for you revenues and expenditures for the past five years in these funds. And you'll see that typically those lines are very close together. Sometimes they basically overlap. We did see an increase of about $36.7 million in revenues across these funds. Again, that assessed value, that investment income and ARPA revenue replacement drove that. And at the same time, we saw some increases in our expenditures. The difference there, six and a half million was depicted on that first chart. That's our net change or increase in fund balance. So what comprised those revenue increases? Across the top line, we had about a 7.6% increase in the ad valorem or property tax collections across those funds. Sales and use taxes were almost flat. There was just a minor increase, but it wasn't statistically significant. We did see more motor vehicle registrations and higher value registrations that resulted in about a 20% increase in our motor vehicle tax, an additional three and a half million on a year-over-year basis. Investment income was about $5 million higher this year than it was in 2023. And in our other revenue, we see an increase there of $27.7 million. ARPA revenue replacement was captured in the general fund in this line item. So that contributed to that fourth quarter increase in these funds. Personnel expenses are the primary driver, primary expenditure that we make in these funds. And you can see basically what we expected to see as a result of salary and wage adjustments. You have higher fixed personnel costs with salaries and wages, benefits, and the other personnel expenditures. And at the same time, a reduction in overtime as more positions were filled across the organization. So I think we met our goals here. We do have some key non-personnel expenditures in these funds. And just to hit some of the high points here, grant awards was up by 7.4%. That almost matches our increase in ad valorem tax collections because the WSU one and a half mil grant is captured in this line item. We saw a smaller jail population. That affected our fee for service contracts and medical professional services in terms of reducing expenditures there. Less food, less medical services provided in the jail to that smaller population. We also did defer a large financial system upgrade that will be done in 2025. So that contributed to that lower fee for service contract expenditure. The transfers out, the money, the ARPA transfer that we saw, or I'm sorry, some year-end transfers for CIP and for some other technology reserves and things, represents that increase in our transfers out. And then we had a couple of one-time events last year in 2023, some capital campaign contributions that didn't reoccur in 2024. A few moments on the FIRE district, we see again the same graphical depictions of revenues and expenditures for the FIRE district over a five-year period. Pretty stable. We've seen some uptick in the last couple of years as a result of that expanding tax base. You will note that expenditures exceed revenues in the FIRE district in 2024. Primarily, as we look at the line item, you see higher revenues from property tax. But again, that 15 step But again, that 15-step pay plan contributed to higher personnel costs. There were some equipment purchases, while a large percentage change, more a big dollar change, but some things that were planned in '23 couldn't get delivered till 2024. So some increases there. And then the Fire District made a transfer, two and a half million-dollar transfer to their Fire Special Equipment Fund. That's picked up on the transfers out. And that's to establish some funding for anticipated future needs. In a way, it's a savings account for the Fire District, draws down their fund balance and sets aside money for future purchases. The county operates 31 different funds for which there is not a dedicated property tax. These are primarily the big grant funds. The CARES and ARPA funds were captured in these funds as well. Now, let me take a minute and unpack this next graph because it looks pretty busy. But the top two lines that you'll see, the dotted green line and the dotted blue line, those are total revenues and total expenditures for the past five years in those funds for which there was not a dedicated property tax levy. The solid red and solid orange lines are what those revenues and expenditures would look like if we hadn't received COVID stimulus money. So the COVID dollars, those CARES dollars we received in 2020, ARPA money received in '21 and '22 are all depicted in that top line, those top two lines. And if you look below, you can see outside of those, these follow a very similar pattern to our other funds. Revenues and expenditures are roughly equal year-over-year basis. The main driver of revenue increases that you saw in that previous graph outside of those COVID-related stimulus funds were in our PPS-1 Medicaid fees. Now, that's a result of the change that Comcare made to their billing model and their service models to become a CCBHC provider. In 2022, that line was $10 million. It went to 23, then 32. So we're continuing to see strong revenue growth as a result of those changes. State and federal revenue on the next two lines. We see increases here of $5 million and $11 million in those lines. State mental health hospital revenues that we're getting from State General Fund and then ARPA pass-through dollars are being captured here. In terms of all of our other revenues, we're seeing basically flat revenue increases across there. So we're not seeing big notable changes in those areas. The key expenditures in these funds for which there is not a dedicated property tax, again, are coming in salaries and wages and employee benefits. We also have some large transfers out, and this is the ARPA transfer to revenue replacement being picked up there, the $33.35 million in 2024. That picked up that $32 million transfer. And then we saw a reduction in all other expenditures. We spent more ARPA funds on courthouse remodeling, some of the other health department activities in '23 than we did in 2024. The next graph looks a bit erratic. It's really pretty steady. But this shows us for the past six years, on a quarterly basis, our ending fund balance in our general fund. It reflects the tax collection and our expenditure cycle. First half taxes are distributed to the county on January 20th. Second half taxes are distributed June 20th. So the first two quarters where we get the bulk of our property tax money, it's spent down throughout the remainder of the year. So pretty much this is a gradually up trending line. County policy says that we are going to maintain an unrestricted fund balance at no less than 20% of our budgeted general fund expenditures. That's depicted on that line at 20%, with the yellow diamonds. And you can see that we consistently comply with that policy. Looking at our investment portfolio, we had a high watermark, I think historically, at least as long as I can remember, of a $779 million investment portfolio as of the end of 2024. Now, that's not all our money, but we're collecting taxes in November and December. And rather than just plopping the city and county dollars that we've collected on their behalf in the checking account, we're investing those funds so that they're secure and they can earn a bit of interest for us while we're administering those funds. That $779 million is up from about $717 the prior year. We earned in the fourth quarter of 2024 $3.8 million on our investment portfolio. It was $2.7 million the same time period last year. For the year, investment income was $15.7 million. That compares favorably to $10.3 million in the prior year. So we've seen a big jump in our investment income. More money is being strategically invested. We have some lower yielding things that have matured that we've been able to replace at higher maturities, and so we're seeing some benefits there. I would point out, the yellow line is the one-year T-bill rate. That's our benchmark. We're just about to catch it as we have been able to reinvest at higher rates going forward. A few capital projects for which there was beginning or ending activity or significant activity in the fourth quarter. Real estate was purchased in December of 2024 for EMS post one. And the architect and engineering services are about to be awarded, project management and moving forward toward a bid letting and hopefully a completion of that project in December of 2025. There was a major rebuild of the chillers in the main courthouse. That came in under budget. It was completed in December 2024. They told me what all they did, but I'll just tell you it was a soup-to-nuts rebuild because I don't understand all of that. R353 is a project on Ridge Road to improve public safety, enhance travel safety by widening the shoulders from 53rd Street to 69th Street North. And then B498 is a bridge on 143rd Street East between Pawnee and 31st Street South. This project is going to replace a bridge that was in existence since 1963, been raided in poor condition. That got underway in November of last year. As I sum up this report, I would leave you with these key takeaways. One is that we continue to receive a AAA debt rating. We have a growing tax base, a growing local economy. All those things contribute and speak to the county's sound fiscal condition. A year ago, I told you we were looking at three things, pressures outside the county control. Those really didn't change, even though some of the numbers changed on a year-over-year basis. Inflation's a little lower than it was a year ago, but there may be some inflationary pressures coming. Interest rates have stabilized. We thought they might be declining more this year. They stopped that, so we're holding kind of steady in that area. A year ago, unemployment in the county was at 3.1%. It's at 4% today. So while it has gone up, we're still over a percent below what our historical average of about 5.2% is. So pretty stable employment locally. Federal and state legislative decisions are something that we continue to monitor. Just in the last week, we saw uncertainty about federal funding. We've been monitoring a specific bill at the state legislature that could infect our investment portfolio. There are a number of things around property tax as well. As we move into the budget cycle, we need to want to continue to provide you the data that you need so that you can hit that sweet spot, managing, meeting the community's service expectations with their fiscal expectations. We want to continue to be a preferred employer. A lot of employment stability within the county has occurred over the last couple of years. And as we move forward with the ARPA revenue replacement dollars, we want to be strategic and prudent as we use those. With that, I will stand for questions.
Okay. Brent, thank you for the report. Thank you to all the team in finance. It spends a lot of time issuing these monthly reports that we get, quarterly reports. These are big. There's a lot of data included into this, so I want to say thank you to you and the team in finance that does all the work on this. Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments on the quarterly financial report? Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you for the report. I always love getting into these charts and stuff. Unfortunately, I am so focused on the chart we just left, I lose some of the comments on the next chart that you're talking about. So I apologize. I want to go back to a couple of things. One of the items on here, the CIP, that post one, can we get an update on? You know that we changed locations, I guess, recently. It was supposed to be at one location. Did it move geographically to a slightly different site?
My understanding is we're on 13th Street.
Post one, that location has not changed. It's still 13th.
Ready for an update? We can get you one in staff. We'll get you.
And so the land acquisition for that, what was the cost of that land acquisition? Does anybody know?
Not as much as we paid on Web. Rusty, I'm looking at you. $180,000 for the land, post one EMS.
I think about $170,000.
Tony says, yeah, that's about right. So the building is 1.5-ish million, maybe 1.6? This is 1.84 million for post one. They committed 0.17, it says here, so $170,000 has been committed. So I assume that $170,000 is probably the land, maybe?
I think that's the land purchase, right.
So I'm just curious, the difference in those two numbers is about 1.6, roughly. One of my questions, I guess, is are we doing brick and mortar again? Are we doing a building like we see out there on Web Road? Web Road, just.
Tony, you're the assistant county manager. This post will be exactly like the one on Web Road.
It will be?
Yes, exactly.
Does that mean the costs have gone up that much? Because anyone on one of the Web Road was like $750,000.
Yeah, there will be some inflation just due to construction.
That's a big inflation. That's more than double the cost for the building, so.
Yeah, and we can get you those estimated numbers on that project. But again, that number that you see there is total project cost, so that's everything. That's architectural fees, that's the building, that's FFNE, everything in that particular number.
Okay. And then another question for Brent. I think I saw a notification that we're going to be meeting with the appraiser soon to get updates on the next assessment rate report that's coming out. Is that just a couple of weeks away, isn't it?
I think that's right, yes.
Okay. I guess I won't bring it up today, but I am very worried about that report. I think that's going to be a pretty major discussion. Some of the big numbers in here, those large transfers, again, just generally speaking, those are based on ARPA transfers at the end of the year primarily? Okay. I think that's what you said, okay. And then there's one word in, one chart in here where it talks about with COVID or without COVID. I think it's a line chart you had there on page 12, slide 12. Talks about with COVID or without COVID. What do you mean by with COVID or without COVID?
The top two lines for revenues and expenditures, those dotted green and dotted blue lines, those are total revenues and total expenditures in the funds that include in 2020 the $100 million for CARES, in 2021 and 2022, the $50 million each year for ARPA. Below that, we removed those to, so if we had not had that event, what we think things would have looked like.
Okay. So the bottom two lines is really what I need to focus on today. And that's generally, I think, good that the amber is below the red. So, all right. Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I would just add two quick ones. The Fire District, $7.9 million fund balance. There are some expenditures, some transfers out on page 10 that you had discussed. They go to a reserve fund of some sorts. Could you give me two things? And if you need to email me this, it's fine. But what's the balance in that reserve fund? And what are the limitations or what does that reserve fund specified to do? If you can get me that information.
I'll check on that balance and send that to you.
Thank you. I know there's discussions about what might be coming in the Fire District in regards to other projects and things like that. So having that information, I think, would be helpful, particularly the limitations of it. The second thing is, I want the public to understand this more. The year-end fund balance, $104 million. We've seen an uptick in this. Our policy is 20% of the budgeted general fund expenditures is the minimum threshold that we maintain. We're working at about 34%. Was that the number that I saw?
Correct. That was the year-end.
What is the finance plan for, and I don't think it's responsible to spin this thing down to 20%. I'm not alluding to that. But we do have some excess cash that's free cash, unrestricted cash. Are those for one-time projects? What is the idea that finance would recommend, staff recommendation, for how we get into a, we spend down some of that free cash?
One of the things that we keep in mind, it's a top priority for us as well as for the county, is to make sure that we maintain adequate fund balances. So we take guidance from our financial advisor as well as those rating agencies, what's a sufficient level of reserves that we should maintain. So as we go through a budget process, if your priorities are to, for different expenditures and maybe not funding that with current revenues, that's a time that we might dip into those fund balances. But we've done some, dipped into those fund balances at the beginning of the pandemic. We've kind of moved back to trying to restore some of that.
Okay, good. Manager Stone, ten seconds.
Chairman, it's just a segue. Two weeks from Friday, we have budget retreat. And both the topics on Fire District, plans and going forward, and what you're just asking about right here, we're going to be talking about that during the retreat in some detail.
Okay. I would also just acknowledge to the public, one of the big things that jumped off the page here was the investment earnings. And you know, you're looking annually $15.7 million of investment earnings upwards. I think we had $10 million last year. So there's a, you know, we're looking 40, 50% increase in investment. That's significant dollars. I think it's very important that the people understands this could be, if without that, we're dependent on other sources of revenue like property taxes, that investment income is helpful for property tax relief. It allows us to put these dollars into the general funds so we can lower and keep property tax dependence low. So just like we think of that with sales tax dollars, investment income can be seen in the same light that this helps to drive down property tax dependence.
It is. And Brent says our money, he's referring to the county, it's the people's money. And so it's just like at home, when you make a little bit of investment money, you can use that to defer costs of what you have to pay out weekly. It's exactly the same great analogy.
Yeah, want the public to be aware of that. It's very important. So that's a significant change in what the county assets have with this investment income even since I've been here. So if you're managing that fund, Brent, good job.
I have a lot of good help.
Yeah, I bet. Commissioner Howell?
Just on your comment, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just point out that people look at that, what they consider to be a large ending balance. If I understand the numbers right, we're looking at roughly a little bit less than, talking about money that's above that 20% number, 20% being our minimum number we're willing to touch. And since I've been here, we never have touched that. So we don't want to cross that line. I think that tells you are structurally, you know, imbalanced. You have to find a way to stay above that 20% number or red flags should be going off. But that means we have roughly, the way I see it, my calculations, about $29 million of discretionary spending above that bottom number. And this December report is usually that bottom ending balance number that we probably use for an entire year, saying, if you really wanted to go nuts and spend that extra money, it's not very much in terms of our entire budget.
Right.
You know, we're a large organization here. There's a lot of expenditures. Think about 30, you know, less than $30 million of discretionary spending available. When you're talking about, you know, over half-billion-dollar budget, that's not a lot of money to be playing with here. So the message is not, let's find ways to spend that money. The message is. The message is, we are conservative. And just think about your own personal finances, what is your goal? How much money do you want to have in your, in your bank account that's available to be spent for things that might be unexpected? We are, I think we are actually, if you will, trying to carry the lowest balance possible. But it's reasonable, it's not too low, it's really not too high. It's, it's reasonable. So I don't, I don't look at this money as saying, we have opportunities to spend money. That's not what I think at all. I think the, the message is, we're, we're not overtaxing the people. We're carrying a very reasonable balance to manage the organization of this size. And so there are some organizations out there across the state, I think, that do overtax people. And that's one way they use the Senate Bill 13 law, by not exceeding the revenue neutral rate in any one year. It's because either they have huge inefficiencies that they're capturing, which is probably a good thing for them to do, or they've overtaxed people in the past and they have large ending balances they're tapping. I don't know that any, any, any community necessarily is cutting services to stay under the revenue neutral rate cap, if you will. And so our message, I think, to the people is, we're trying to keep our tax rates as low as possible. We're not carrying huge balances. And I, there's not a lot of opportunity. Our only opportunity is going to be this. For us to cut taxes, we're, we're going to have to cut spending in services. Services have to go down if we're going to cut our tax rates. There's, there's, that's, and they have, I mentioned this yesterday on a Facebook post, services and, and taxes are connected at the hip. Unlike the federal government, if we want to provide services, it comes from the people we, we serve. They have to provide the revenue to make those services happen. So if we're going to cut tax rates, we're going to have to cut those services as well. And we don't have the option of finding efficiencies because we've already done that. We, I don't think we have huge opportunities there. Last year, we had to cut $17 million out of our budget to stay under the revenue neutral rate last year. And that $17 million, think about that, how much of this revenue without it? It would change our report entirely had we done that. And so a little way to really capture a $17 million cut is to cut $17 million of the services, out of the property tax-supported services. And since we know the vast majority of our property tax expenditures go to core functions of government, you're going to be cutting things that people really care about. So my message to the, to the, to the state and others watching is, we are a conservative organization, and I'm very proud of our fiscal management. I think you all did a great job. And our, our job is not to overtax people and to be as efficient and as small as possible while we deliver the services people demand. And that's, that's a hard balance to hit. I think we're, we're there right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and file the presentation of the quarterly financial report. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Brent, thanks again. Appreciate the work. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on January 30, 2025.
Well, hello, Joe Thomas.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director. And this morning, we're presenting to you the Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting of January 30th. We have seven items that we're seeking your approval for. Our first item is the bridge improvements for Project B 514, Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from King Construction Company Incorporated. It's in the amount of $967,314.50. Our second item is also a bridge improvement. This is Project B 532 for Public Works. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Donlinger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated. And this one is in the amount of $437,643. Item number three is Kronos, the Workforce Maintenance and Support for Division of Information Technology. This recommendation is to accept a quote from Kronos Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $151,411.36. We are at this time deferring item four, and we will bring that hopefully back to you in the near future. Item number five is the Juvenile Services for Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept several proposals. One is from Cherry Creek Treatment Center, the also Kansas Department for Children and Families Doing Business as DCF, and then TFI Family Services Incorporated. Item number six is the Cedric County Courthouse Annex Remodel, Phase One, for the offender registration unit, and this is for project services. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Icon Structures. It's in the amount of $913,250. Item number seven, Cedric County Zoo Main Line Backflow Install for Project Services. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from South Central Commercial Mechanical. It's in the amount of $183,317.45. And this funding is contingent on approval. It's future time. And our final item, item number eight, DS 450, Annual Hardware and Software Maintenance Read, excuse me, Maintenance Support and License Agreement for the Elections Office. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Election Systems and Software. It's in the amount of $5,065 annual amount. And this is to be automatically renewed annually unless there's a notice of termination provided by either party. So with that being said, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. To be clear, there were eight items total. We're deferring one.
Yes, sir.
So voting on seven items. All right. Commission, any questions or comments on anything on the bid board? You good, Jim? Okay. All right. I will move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts with the exception of item four.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items K through X.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda?
I would just make note, item K is a letter requesting a major investment study for the Northwest Expressway. I just want the public to be aware that graciously, Secretary, KDOT Secretary Calvin Reed came down a couple of weeks ago and had a meeting here at the county to discuss Northwest Expressway. We had appropriated some dollars in last year's, in this year's budget, 25 budget for a study. And we'd implored KDOT to help us with this study and to initiate the study. And he graciously said that he has opened that idea and asked for a letter of support from the county to officially inquire about the, the major investment study and asked for supporting letters from area cities around us, which we've all started to collaborate. That will all be sent. That's what we're approving today. But I want to thank publicly KDOT Secretary Calvin Reed for coming down and having a great discussion about it. He's very much interested in what the study, had had a study since 1997 on a project we've been talking about since, I don't know, about five years old. So I think this is a needed, needed direction for the county and residents to understand where we're going with this project. So appreciate Calvin Reed.
Okay. Commissioners, I want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items K through X.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Okay. This is something we include in the agenda this time of year when the legislature is in session. Tonya Cole, just like to update us on some legislative issues.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So today is the 24th day of the legislative session, so we are almost about a third of the way through. Turnaround Day is coming up soon. That's scheduled for February 20th. And so at that point, non-exempt bills that have not passed through Chamber of Origin, that will be considered dead. So just an update, the four bills that we talked about at Agenda Review that were part of our legislative platform, that we pushed to Watkins Public Strategy to try to get some movement on, we are now seeing that that has been to the reviser's office. We've gotten two bills back for our review, and that covered elections, and then it covered the Regional Forensics Science Center, the cremated remains of unclaimed individuals. So we've had an opportunity to review a couple of those, and so we'll get that back. We know that the reviser's office are, is very busy, so we are just kind of watching that, you know, those bills will progress, and we will remain to see those bills make progress. As you're aware, Chairman Beatty, on behalf of the County Commission, sent an email to the Financial Institution and Pensions Committee on House Bill 2152. And Brent just mentioned that in his update. So the county's position on that was that we agree with investing public funds in local banks. However, the proposed legislation would effectively lower the minimum investment rates banks must offer to secure public funds from the statutory rates to the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool rates. So as an example, I think on Monday, that difference would have been 1.3%. So this potentially allows banks with a risk-free option to offer a below-market rate of return on local public funds and then reinvest those funds in U.S. government securities at a higher rate. So that hearing was on Monday, and we will just keep our eyes and ears on how this is progressing, and I will keep you updated on that. We received House Bill 119, that's Treasurers' Bill on increasing the amount of fees retained by the county treasurer, the division of vehicles, or a contractor for processing motor vehicle license applications and certificate of titles. So that's good news. I know that Brandy has been working on that with the Treasurers' Association. So Brandy and Lindsay were going to review that bill and see how that fiscally impacts the county. So that's good news on that one. I did mention this at Agenda Review on Friday, so I hope you don't mind if I just mention this one more time for the public, as this relates to property tax bills. The Senate passed two bills, Senate Bill 35, that eliminates the 1.5 mill levy for state educational and institutional buildings. The money for those impacted buildings would be made up through the general fund. And then Senate Bill 10, that exempts a variety of residential vehicles from property tax, which includes motorized bicycles, watercrafts, snowmobiles, and trailers. And this bill was supported by the county appraisers, stating that it creates efficiencies and lowers costs. You receive the weekly updates from Watkins Public Strategies, lists out several bills. I do pass that on to county staff, so if there's anything that we need to become aware of, we make sure and have that conversation with our lobbyist in Topeka. I do want to mention that there was a meeting yesterday with Commissioner Howell and Representative Lewis on Senate Bill 367, on potential legislation there. So I might hand this over to Commissioner Howell to speak on that piece.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak. And, and Tonya, thank you for that lead in. This is one of those issues we've been working on for years. It's, it's taken a few years to get to this point, actually. We had several meetings late last year, including one in January, where, I'll call him Chairman Bob Lewis, he's the chairman of the committee that deals with juvenile justice. He did a ten-year meeting in, in early January, before the session began. I just want to commend him. He has done a great job understanding the problem that we have identified. There's actually five problems we identified through those meetings. But one of those is, one of those specifically deals with this issue of the judges don't have an opportunity to, to put juvenile offenders into a group home because they don't exist any longer. State law does actually allow for them to exist, but there's been no mandate to actually create any, and there are none in the state of Kansas, because it's an expenditure, long story short, without, with zero juvenile offender group homes in the state of Kansas, they're, they're using foster care to house these kids. And that's the problem. Or, or they basically don't remove them from a bad environment, or they have to seek a conviction to send them to Juvenile Corrections in Topeka, basically, it's a youth prison, if you will. So they're lacking this one option. We're not asking for a lot. We're asking for some beds in the state, not what we had before, 367. And again, just for everyone's reference point, 367 is a, is a historical bill. When we use that term, we're talking about one that was passed in 2016. It was, it was a total rewrite of the juvenile justice codes for our state. So we're still trying to, if you will, create trailer policy to make some minor changes to that law. Again, I'll argue that law was 75% good and 25% unintended consequences. This is one of them. So we're addressing that in this law. And we've, again, we've had numerous meetings. We did meet yesterday. We have a bill that I think is very mature. It is ready for introduction. I expect the reviser will send that out for our final review today. And that means it'll be read into the record probably tomorrow or Friday to receive its bill number. And I would anticipate a very quick turnaround. We will have to respond to testify by our staff, and I'm sure that foster folks like Amber Hope will want to testify on this bill, as well as our corrections folks. And maybe someone from the judicial area of our, of our county may want to speak to this bill. I would like to testify as well on this bill. I'd anticipate a bill hearing sometime early next week, possibly maybe later, later next week. And then, and Tonya, you did say one thing I'd like to, to just change the, the information about this just a little bit. Turnaround is on February 20th, I do agree on that. There's a, there's a way we refer to bills in Topeka as nothing's ever dead. So, you know, there's ways of reviving, of reviving bills. But second of all, this is a biennial session, so every bill that doesn't pass out of a committee before the 20th, still has all, some are interim committees can do some work on things to, to create policies that we, we want, they can continue to prefile bills for the next session. And we actually have the 2026 session to continue any work that doesn't get through in the 2025 session. So just because we don't make success necessarily before the 20th, doesn't mean that we're, that it's dead. I wouldn't use that word. I do think there's, there's still hope to continue working on any legislation that doesn't make it through that, through that gate on that date. I do want to commend Assistant County Manager Rusty Leeds and Tonya Cole. They both have done a good job. Our lobbyist has done a good job. Chairman Bob Lewis, who chairs the committee, as well as our legal staff, has done a great job, as well as our corrections, me and Mario, and Stephen Stonehouse have worked together to create this bill proposal. So I think it's really good. I would like to see the county continue to stay engaged. And let me just say, say once again, this impacts our families of Cedric County and across the state of Kansas. This impacts foster care in a negative way. This is going to create a different solution to an ongoing problem. And I think ultimately, if these kids can get the, get the right type of placement, we hope that they would get on the right tracks and hopefully graduate from high school, have a career, buy a home, raise a family, become very productive members of our, of our community. And without this type of bill, I think we are left with basically a, a non, a non-productive placement that harms other people and ultimately doesn't solve the problem. These kids end up incarcerated, generally speaking. So this is incredibly important. I appreciate the, the support of my colleagues here to get this bill to the point that it is at, ready for a bill hearing, hopefully, hopefully next week. I'll be glad to stand for questions on that or anything else. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Go, Jim, go on that one. That's a big deal. Tonya?
I just want to make one point of clarification. I did say on House Bill 119, which was the treasurer bill, that's good news for the county. I just want to clarify on that, because it is talking about increasing the amount of fees retained by the county treasurer. That means for us that we are not having to subsidize with property tax.[1650.15] That means for us that we are not having to subsidize with property tax, so I just want to make that clarification on why that's good news for the county.
Very good.
That's all I have, Commissioners.
Commissioners, any questions for Tanya? Again, thank you, Tanya, for the work you do. Thank you to the Watkins Group, and also to our legal counsel. They're very much involved in some of these bill writings, so I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Do we need to receive and file that, or are we good, Justin? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay. Commissioners, any committee reports you would like to announce to the public? I would say that we, a lot of the committees with two new commissioners, these discussions have been happening this week on who's going where and who's doing what. So those things should be worked out and be on the agendas here in the next few commission meetings. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other. I would just make the comment in regards to the tragedy, the flight tragedy. And again, I just want to publicly thank those that have stepped up into leadership to really try to help the community navigate, particularly City Wichita, City Council, the mayor, staff over there, they've done, in my view, a phenomenal job of trying to lead in front and trying to really collaborate a community. I want to thank the governor, who came down, spent a lot of time here. Congressman Estes has been very involved, as have Senator Moran and Senator Marshall. I also want to thank Julie Stimson from Emergency Management, who helped to convene some meetings in regards to what's the mental health approach moving forward for those that are, seem to be having a problem dealing with some of these traumatic events that have taken place. So this has been very difficult. So I just want to publicly thank those that have tried to lead in this in a very, very hard season. I think it's worth noting that there are people that really care deeply about what comes of this, and I appreciate the work they've done. Anything else under other? Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:20 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss legal claims against Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from the executive session at 11:20.
Okay. I second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And we'll be going upstairs to the sixth floor of the boardroom. Okay? See you back here, 11:20.[612.73]
Okay folks, we are back from executive session. There was no binding action taken today. Anything else need to come before the commission? Seeing none, we are officially adjourned. Have a good day.